Good evening. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for June 6, 2018. This meeting is being audio and video recorded for Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws. Tonight, we will have a report from Rick Gudrow with regard to some finish grades and depth of bedrock plan. Then, we're going to move into our review from the LSPs. The applicant's LSP will do a presentation, and then they'll be followed up by the towns, higher LSP who are representing the town in the ZBA, and he will do a presentation after that. So, at this time, I will introduce Mr. John Smolak, who's going to do a review for us and bring us up to date.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Other members of the board for the record, John Smolak, attorney for Appyville Development and Appyville Residential, the applicants for these matters. Justin DiGeece, members of the project team who are here this evening, Thomas DePlacido Jr., the principal of the applicant, Rick Gudrow of United Consultants, our project engineer, and Stephen Viteri of Mabit Associates, our project environmental consultant and licensed site professional. Mr. Chairman, as you've indicated, what we'd like to do is first provide you with just a brief summary update, and since we haven't met since mid-April, and so I wanted to go through some items where we think we've provided complete information, or we think there may be a few cleanup items that remain to be completed with various issues before we get to the other status items. But, so, first, I think I just want to summarize some of these items that we've discussed already. We've completed the subdivision design and the road configuration plans, eliminated dead ends, and made other adjustments as recommended by the board's peer review consultants. We've completed the overall drainage design, which has also been peer reviewed. We prepared an overall cut-and-fill analysis, including depth-to-bedrock analysis and plan which have also been reviewed. We've prepared a detailed overall comprehensive construction management and operations plan that has been peer-reviewed by the project, by the board's peer review engineer. There are some follow-up items that need to be completed to finish up that particular construction plan. We've also had extensive discussions on traffic and trucking and traffic mitigation, including trucking routes. We've also prepared an extensive groundwater impacts analysis with additional testing as part of the groundwater plan, which also has been extensively peer-reviewed. We've also prepared an overall conceptual landscape plan, which we provided adjustments based on peer review information provided. We've also undergone the architectural peer review, and as a result, eliminated items such as duplex buildings. We've also introduced variations in designs and the like, and introduced other additional structural changes in terms of the architectural design. So, and lastly, we've discussed the replacement of the septic systems with a packaged wastewater treatment plant, and we've also submitted information, supplemental information, dealing with the proposed wastewater treatment plant design and treatment levels. So, that information is with the board as well. So, I think that we've provided an extensive amount of information to date, and we still have a couple of outstanding items, as we all understand, that we hope to get to you over the next 30 to 60 days to clean up the final plans, to present to the board, unless there are other further peer view comments that are necessary. So, with that said, I'd like to turn the discussion over to Rick Gudrow, who'll just provide a very brief status report on the information he's provided.
Thank you.
Good evening, Rick Gudrow with United Consultants. Since we've last met, we've had an opportunity to conduct some additional soil testing on the site. That was requested by the peer review consultant for the town Horstley and Witten Group. Three additional test pits were excavated in Infiltration Basin 1, 2, and 3. The purpose of that was to determine if there were soil models present in the three infiltration basin areas, and we found soil modeling to be present in all three areas. Basins 1 and 2 were not affected by the soil modeling. Elevation as greater than four feet of separation was provided. In Infiltration Basin 3, we made some adjustments to that basin by making the basin larger in volume and elevating the bottom elevation up to accommodate for four feet of separation. Additionally, at the request of the, one of the neighbors, the applicant, requested that we provide a bedrock plan, which is what you see up here on the screen. And basically, that plan was worked on with Steve Smith from GeoHydrocycle. The bedrock contours were generated by Mr. Smith. We had some additional soil testing done to the northeast corner of the development area of this, excuse me, of the site. Four additional test pits were excavated in that area to provide some additional information, and based on that, plus the addition, the existing test pits, monitoring wells that were present on the site, Steve was able to generate the groundwater contours. It's actually the other plan, I mean, this is the site grading plan. So, you can, you can see that the site bedrock contours are in the reddish color, and they're overlaid on the site development plan that has the lots and the proposed finish grades, so that the comparison can be done from the site grading to the bedrock contours that exist. We've also provided in the upper right-hand corner of this plan sheet, a summary of the monitoring well information, elevations, depths, et cetera, to help provide some additional information. The monitoring wells in boring locations were also shown on the plan, so the basis of where the information came from could also be seen on the plan. Thank you.
We're going to have discussion of this at our next meeting after it's been peer reviewed by Tetra Tech and Horstley-Witten. So, we will be revisiting this at the next meeting after they have a chance to peer review. This time, Tommy, do you want to have, Rick, start his presentation? Steve, I'm sorry, Steve.
Thanks very much for having us. My name's Steve Viteri. I'm with Mabit and Associates. I'm here helping Tom on the environmental remediation portion of the project, specifically the former Buckley &amp; Mann portion of the site, which, as you know, is a 20-acre portion that was formerly used as a textile facility. Mabit and Associates, just to quickly talk about Mabit and Associates, we are environmental consultants and engineers, veteran-owned business, in business since 1980. We work on a lot of these environmental projects for, remediation projects for developers like Tom, small businesses, multinational corporations, and the federal government as well. Clients are, US EPA is one of our big clients, the Army Corps of Engineers, so we've got a lot of experience working on complex sites like this. So, just to open, I wanted to go through the outline of what I intend to do today. Want to start by sharing information about the historical operations for the Buckley &amp; Mann facility, and talk a little bit about the pre-2001 environmental assessment remediation work that was done by Buckley &amp; Mann. And 2001 is the, is sort of the magic date here. 2001 is the year of the initial site closure, when the response action outcome, which is the term for site closure under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. So, 2001 is sort of a line of demarcation where the work done prior to 2001 is what the decision was based on, the RAO was based on, information collected before 2001. And then, once the site was closed in 2001, there was about a decade later when this project was contemplated. Tom did some additional investigation work in between 2013 and the present. There's additional environmental assessment work. I intend to share the results of that information as well. And I'm also going to talk about the notice of audit findings in 2007 that was received from Mass DEP, which is recent news and important news. Talk about the public involvement plan. That's an opportunity for the public to participate in this whole site closure process, and then we'll talk about the next steps and where we go from here. So, I'd like to start with this picture here of the Buckley &amp; Mann facility in circa 1940s. I think this is a really nice way to kick it off and talk a little bit about what the operations were on the site, how it looked when it's in its heyday. So, first off, we've got two primary sources of waste to the site here, and this is the, and this is where the waste, liquid wastes that ultimately ended up in lagoons originated from. We'll, I'll talk in greater detail about those, but before I get to that, I want to talk about these peripheral buildings here. These buildings reported to not have used any chemicals or generate any liquid waste. These are actually carding buildings that supported the dye house and the carbonizer process, and so the carding process, for those that don't know much about textile, is a way for them to treat the fibers before they go into the spinning process. And so, so those processes were accomplished in these buildings, and we've got some administrative buildings and even a residence here. But really, the focus of my discussion's going to be the processes that went on in these two buildings. And the first is the carbonizer building. The carbonizer building is the older of the two processes, and a carbonizing in the textile process is the process that Buckley &amp; Mann used to separate the textiles from the fasteners, so buttons, zippers, and those types of things. If you can imagine, those are threaded onto the textiles, and carbonizing is a process where acid vapors are passed over that, and it kind of melts away the fasteners and separates the fiber from the button or the zipper. And so, you have two waste streams in that process. The first is the solid stuff that comes off. Those would be zippers, buttons, or other fasteners, and those, those solid wastes were disposed of in the onsite landfill up here that's to the north of the carbonizer building. And then, liquid wastes. Liquid wastes were discharged into a carbonizer, what we call the carbonizer trench, and back to a carbonizer lagoon. And we'll get into much more detail about where these things are on the site and all the testing that was done. This is really my intent, to talk about the processes, and so that we can understand why we went out, Buckley &amp; Mann went out to sample where they did and why they looked for certain chemicals. The other important building in the whole process is the dye house, and the dye house was used for, as you would expect, to add color to textiles. And the dye house used dyes that were, included chemicals such as polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, most notably 2-methylnaphthalene and naphthalene, and also metals are constituents of dyes as well. And so, the liquid waste from the dye house passed through a trench and went to lagoons 1 and 2, sort of to the north and west of the dye house. We'll refer to Area 10 in this, in the presentation, and Area 10 is the onsite landfill. And the onsite landfill, as I talked about earlier, received solid waste from the carbonizer and the dye house processes. There was, there's some small amounts of building materials when they did minor renovations to the, to the, to the complex. They had coal ash when they, when they used to heat the building. They would dispose of coal ash in Area Number 10, and you can see even in this picture, there are some piles of wastes here that were left behind. And Area Number 10 becomes important when we talk about consolidating waste from these other operations into the onsite consolidation cell. Haven't talked about it because it's not, wasn't part of the waste process at the facility, but there's a tail race that runs from, runs, it used to run from Bush Pond up to the Mill River, and that was a hydroelectric facility essentially. These, this trench has since been filled in, but it used to be, there used to be a water wheel here, and water used to flow from Bush Pond through the water, water wheel, providing a source of electricity for the facility. And then, after the water passed through the water wheel, it flowed through the tail race and back up to the Bush River to the north of the site. So, at one point in time, this facility was entirely powered by hydroelectric. So, now, let's, this is a current view with those features shown on it. We can see the remnants of the carbonizer building, which was demolished in 1965, and we can see the remnants of the other buildings, which were demolished in 2011. Here's the dye house. Here's that big carding building. These are the other carding buildings, and the residences here. So, this, I'm hoping this gives you a sense of what it looks like today from about the same angle as that 1940s-era photograph. And so, when, when the previous, when the LSP, Buckley &amp; Mann's LSP, looked at the site and decided, where are we going to look for contaminants, and what process, where did these processes produce in terms of wastes, they focused on, on four major areas. And so, the first one was the dye house lagoons. And so, there's a lot of sampling done in those dye house lagoons. They received liquid waste, 2-methylnaphthalene and metals, originating from the dye house. I told you that that passed through a trench before it got to the lagoons. Well, in, well, in 2000, in the 1980s, when the dye house stopped operation, that trench was excavated out. About 130 cubic yards of soil was taken out and filled back in with clean sand. So, that was addressed. There was, a pile of that soil was staged next to the lagoons for some time, and ultimately put under the cover into the consolidation area. So, the sampling in the, throughout the 80s and 90s focused on lagoons number 1 and 2, focused on the carbonizer lagoon, carbonizer trench, and the consolidation area Number 10 at the top of the screen there. Just to change the vantage point a little bit here now, and get us familiar with where the presentation goes from here, now we're looking straight down, bird's eye view. This is the site plan that was in the 2001 closure document, and these are our significant features that I've been talking about. So, here's the carbonizer lagoon, carbonizer trench, tail race running all the way from the pond up to Mill River. This is lagoon number 1. This is lagoon number 2. This is where that former dye house trench is. Notice on this map, this is mid-'90s, the carbonizer building is gone. That was demolished in the '60s, but the rest of these buildings are still intact. Remember, those did not, were not demolished till 2011. Here they are on a present-day map, and we're going to be looking at this view for the rest of the presentation, so I just wanted, again, show it here. This is what it looks like today. You can see the carbonizer lagoon is grown in, unrecognizable as a lagoon, lagoons 1 and 2 as well. And here are the limits of the AOL area. So, the AOL area encompasses the consolidation area and the two lagoons. Does not encompass the carbonizer lagoon or the carbonizer trench, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. So, these are the soil sample locations pre-2001. This is the information that Buckley &amp; Mann used to support closure in 2001. These are where they collected their samples. So, you can see, the focus is predictably on lagoons 1 and 2. Quite a few samples there, decent spatial distribution. And there are samples of the red points within the consolidation area here are samples of debris piles and other, you know, other materials that were disposed over time in that onsite landfill. And there's a couple of piles of soil down here, and then on an old foundation, that were also sampled, because those were materials that were dredged out of lagoons 1 and 2 in the 1970s and 1980s. So, what Buckley &amp; Mann did is periodically, those lagoons would fill up with sediment, and in order for those to be able to receive the amount of wastewater that was being discharged, they periodically excavated the bottom of those, and they would leave stockpiles of that material adjacent to the lagoons. Zooming in a little closer to lagoons 1 and 2, focusing on just lagoons 1 and 2, 14 sampling locations were used to characterize the nature of materials in those two lagoons between 1986 and 2000. And I love numbers, so here's a table. I won't go through gory detail, but this is the, and let me explain this table here because I have a few of these in here. When, when we go and collect samples from environmental media, whether it be soil or sediment or groundwater, we look for a whole long list of stuff, really long list, hundreds of different chemicals. But usually, at sites like this, we're really only looking for a small handful. And here, the ones I focused on are the ones that were detected most frequently. You can see the metals we talked about. We believe those to be constituents of dye, dye carriers, 2-methylnaphthalene and naphthalene, dichlorobenzene, and petroleum hydrocarbon. So, these are all things we would expect to find in an operation that sent wastewater to lagoons from a textile manufacturing facility. Before I go to the next slide, I want to point out S1, what does S1GW1 mean? So, S1GW1 is a risk assessment standard that's established by Mass DEP, and this is a standard that's established for the most conservative site use, that would be using this, this land for residential use. So, this is protective of frequent and intense contact with the soil by children, and children and pregnant women, the most sensitive receptors. So, these are the most conservative standards that, that the state establishes for soil. So, 20 parts per million of arsenic is an acceptable, below that is an acceptable level of that, of arsenic in soil at a residential home, in a backyard, somewhere where it's readily accessible to children. So, what I've done on this slide is compare the levels of these constituents in the average concentration of these 14 samples is in this column here, and the maximum concentration of these 14 samples is in the third column. In this format, I'll use this format throughout in the next couple of slides, just as a way of, an overview of the data of the key constituents that are detected and the ones that drove the cleanup for the site. Shift over to the carbonizer lagoon, and these are the three samples that were used by, by the LSP to make decisions on whether or not any remediation was warranted in the carbonizer trench or the carbonizer lagoon. This is what they found in those three samples, the average and the max, and they, they decided, based on this information and some other observations, not to take action to address any contamination in the carbonizer lagoon or the carbonizer trench. There were no controls placed. The AOL activity and use limitation did not extend around this, these two areas, and there was no soil removed. And then, just to wrap up the remedial actions, I haven't spoken much about these other samples outside. I mentioned them a little bit. The LSP broke up the site into different areas, and so these areas 3, 4, and 5 are, I think it's 3, 4, and 5, this is, this is material that was taken out of these dye house lagoons a couple of times during the '70s and '80s, stockpiled to the south of the lagoons. Is in Area 6, I think it's this one, which is the dye house trench material that was excavated out in the 1980s, and it stayed there for a decade or so. And then, they found 14 55-gallon drums of material that was recovered, that was dumped out onto poly sheeting. They sifted through it, looked for any overtly, obviously contaminated dye pastes or highly contaminated materials, shipped those offsite, and the rest of it was consolidated onsite. The other thing they did up here in the landfill area was they, they excavated out all the areas where there was, historically was used as a dump. They looked through that soil. Again, they took 315 cubic yards of the most highly contaminated material off of the site to a landfill, and then the lower concentrations, materials, or the materials that weren't overtly contaminated, were consolidated into that Area 10 location. And so, here's Area 3, 5, and 6. Areas 4 and 7 also end up into a consolidation cell that looks roughly like this, and this consolidation, the materials consolidated into that area were graded. It's about three feet thick, and then that material was covered with three feet of clean soil, and grass was planted on it. Gets a lot of, it gets a lot of use and worn down. It doesn't look like there's very much grass there now, but it was vegetated. And so, so the intent here was to consolidate this material into one cell, put a layer of clean soil as a separator to, to limit the possibility that humans would come in contact with this material. And then, the belt and suspenders approach is to put an activity and use limitation on the site around that area to prohibit residential use and to limit the amount of the types of excavation that can happen, and place controls on excavation. And so, that was the approach that was taken to handle these satellite areas of contamination and other historically dumped materials into that onsite landfill, cover it up, and eliminate the direct exposure potential to the humans that occupy the site. So, that's, those are the decisions that were made in 2001 to support site closure. And I want to transition now to post-RAO work that was done and why it was done, and talk a little bit about the results. So, if you look at the map, and we're back here to the, one of the first slides where it shows all the points that were used, all the samples that were collected to support that decision in 2001. I talked about the density here being pretty good, but clearly, there are areas here that there wasn't much investigation done, and, and of course, these buildings in the, in the mid-1990s were still intact, and so it was very difficult to do any investigation in the areas around the buildings. So, so that was identified as an area where some additional exploration was warranted. I think if you go through here, you can see that the carbonizer lagoon and the trench, the tail race, although it was never carried, carried wastes, it nevertheless, it had some, some visual staining in the soil, but was not, was not investigated during the pre-2001. And so, as this project's moved forward, Tom's done some, some post-RAO investigation to kind of fill some of those information gaps. And in 2013, test pits were excavated within those building foundations to answer a couple of questions. Is there contamination in soil beneath the building foundations that was never explored? Are there floor drains or sub-slab conduits beneath the buildings? Is there a, another route for some of those wastes to make their way out into the environment? In 2014, there were additional test pits excavated throughout the building complex to find out if there was something missed within those, those buildings, within, outside the footprints of the foundations, but in the soils. Was something missed in other underground utility lines that carried waste away from the buildings? We had all, we've, we've talked to the mans, and we have anecdotal accounts that there weren't any, any sub-slab drains, but Tom went out and did some work in that building foundation area to definitively determine whether or not there were those features. Because that's an important part of understanding how contamination may have entered the environment. In 2014 and 15, there was two rounds of groundwater sampling from onsite monitoring wells, and in 2018, there was, Tom did some sampling in the tail race, carbonizer trench, the carbonizer lagoon, just to learn more about the contaminant levels and see if there was something possibly missed during the prior investigation. A quick slide here about the 2013 and 14 test pit. A quick slide here about the 2013 and 14 test pit locations. Over 50 test pits were excavated within these footprints here. You can see the red, all the red points are test pits from which a, a soil sample was collected. And then there's many more yellow test pits where test pits were excavated solely for observation. So several through the footprint of the building, of the big buildings, some smaller buildings as well, several at the periphery, just to, just in an effort to, to rule out other routes of contaminant entry to the environment. I think it was 18 soil samples were collected. And you'll see arsenic levels, chromium, lead, zinc here, two-methylnaphthalene identified. So two-methylnaphthalene was identified. You'll see the average is the same as the max. So that was identified in one of the 18 samples. But overall, no significant evidence of contamination. The arsenic, it certainly looks high, but, but I have a feeling that's a natural condition. It's not uncommon in Massachusetts to find arsenic actually above that level. In 2018, four samples were collected from the tail race. This was just, this is to evaluate the possible contamination in the tail race. The results there looked favorable with respect to chemical contamination, which we would expect. Again, it wasn't a, it wasn't a repository for wastes coming from the dye house, although it was, it is next to the lagoons. But nonetheless, there is, there has been staining, there's staining observed there, rust-colored staining in the tail race. So what we did was collect a sample of that water for, for iron-related bacteria analysis. So something that commonly happens in nature is, in iron-rich environments, as they discharge from groundwater into the surface water, they're oxidized and form this rust-colored material. And, and we suspected that it was iron flock was, was the culprit to this staining. We did send a sample. It did come up positive for iron-related bacteria and 2,300 coliform features forming units, colony-forming units. Colony-forming units per milliliter is, is pretty high. It's pretty high. So it's not surprising that, when groundwater expresses itself that it forms this iron flock. Here's the Carbonizer Trench and Lagoon sampling locations, and you can see some extensive sampling's been done over the past several months to look further at the Carbonizer Trench and Lagoon to determine the contaminant levels there. And so here are our characters. We were, we were a little bit more specific in, in our chromium analysis, so we looked for the more toxic version of chromium. And, and good news on that, it doesn't appear to be significant concentrations. But we certainly have something we need to look closer at here. There's some high levels of lead, and the two-methylnaphthalene persists in the environment here, but at lower concentrations. Haven't talked much about groundwater, but, but it is important. The site remedy has, has consolidated contamination underneath area 10, consolidation area within the AOL area. We know that there are chemicals still in the, in the lagoons here and in the Carbonizer Lagoon here. There are controls around the, the landfill and the lagoons to prevent human exposure. But if there's leaching from those soils into the groundwater, that's the most likely path for exposure to humans is through groundwater migration. So we need to be sure that this, this material is, is not leaching into groundwater, and that a key assumption on why it was safe to leave this waste onsite is upheld. And so in 2014 and 2015, a round of groundwater samples were taken from the onsite wells. There's, the onsite wells are depicted as the red circles there. And so there was arsenic, chromium, and lead detected. Well, no lead detected in this sample, but just, just because those are the ones, the contaminants we've been talking about mostly, I presented results for arsenic, chromium, lead, and two-methylnaphthalene. You can see two-methylnaphthalene wasn't detected in groundwater. And there's some really, some relatively low concentrations of arsenic and chromium in monitoring well three. EW2 was further to the south. That was, that's this well here, next to lagoon number two. Again, non-detector, low concentrations of the key metals that, that showed up in the waste stream from the dye house. Two-methylnaphthalene not detected. This is pointing to MW6. So MW6 is right down gradient from, I'm sorry, these are the groundwater, this is the inferred groundwater flow direction. And so we have, MW6 is a well that's directly downstream, down gradient, we call it, from the onsite consolidation area. And it has low concentrations of, of arsenic, chromium, and lead. GW1 here, this is, this is Massachusetts drinking water standard. So you can see those are, those are, if not below, they're very close to drinking water standards. And, and again, I think we have something going on with possibly naturally occurring arsenic. But again, two-methylnaphthalene I think I show one more. That's this one here. So this would be, this would be downstream from the lagoons and maybe catch a little corner of this, of the consolidation area here. And again, consistent with the previous wells, it seems like across the site, we have very little impact groundwater from the wastes left in place in the, in the lagoon and the consolidation area. So let me move on to the Mass DEP audit. In 2017, Buckley and Mann was notified by Mass DEP of their intent to audit the RAO. That's, an audit is a common thing. As a matter of fact, all sites with activity and use limitations are at one point or another audited by Mass DEP. And they, they do that because they, they want to pay the closest attention to the sites where contamination's left on the site to be sure that the, the owner, whoever's responsible for that contamination is taking care to make sure that those, those measures are intact. Later in September, there was a site inspection by Mass DEP. And in November, a notice of audit findings letter was provided to the, to Buckley and Mann. And so the non-compliant issues identified in that letter, we had, sort of view these as administrative requirements that could be easily fixed with paperwork. Documentation needed to be provided that Richard Mann, who signed the AOL, had the authority to sign on behalf of Buckley and Mann, the corporation. Number two, the AOL did not explicitly prohibit residential use. That needs to be changed. And, and number three, Mass DEP wasn't provided documentation that holders of any record interests were notified of the existence of this AOL. So those are administrative oversights that aren't uncommon for AOLs in this era. This is, this was before Mass DEP created guidance for the development of AOLs. And quite frankly, there are a lot of AOLs out there that didn't quite get it right from an administrative and legal standpoint. So these, these are not uncommon findings for, for, for a site from this, this era. Number four is really a technical issue, and I think will be the focus of the work moving forward, and is the focus of the work that's being done right now, is the RAO didn't provide a screening of potential environmental risks. And, and the Massachusetts regulations require not only that the nature and extent of contaminations identified and that human health risks are evaluated, but we're also obligated to look at environmental risks. So that's animals, critters, plants. Does the contamination that's found have an adverse impact on, on the ecosystem? And, and that was not documented in the 2001 RAO report. Mass DEP gave Buckley and Mann 100-day deadline, 180-day deadline. That deadline was reached on May 17th, and studies for the environmental screening risks are ongoing at that point. And so subsequently, Buckley and Mann retracted the RAO and terminated the AOL. And now the site is back in the assessment phase and needs to move back forward towards achieving site closure again. So where do we go from here? We've talked about the environmental risk characterization. That's ongoing. Those samples collected from the Carbonizer Trench and Carbonizer Lagoon are part of the efforts to, to evaluate environmental risk at the site. This new data will also be looked at from a human health standpoint. We will be, in order to reach the, in order to reach the finish line here and get back to site closure, we're going to reevaluate the new data. We will reevaluate the risks, and we will establish a new conceptual site model, more detailed conceptual site model. That's, that's a word us LSPs use for our understanding of, of where wastes entered the environment, how they travel through the environment, and how they might, how they might impact human health or the environment. And so, so collecting the new data and going through the human health and environmental risk process again will help us refine that conceptual site model so we can determine how to make this site safe moving forward. And the AOL, when the permanent solution is achieved, that will, the AOL will need to be re-recorded. The permanent solution state will need to be resubmitted. And then a plan will be established for, for long-term monitoring and maintenance of the AOL to ensure that that cover stays intact and that there's no, no uncontrolled excavation in the areas. I think this is my final slide. By virtue of the fact that the permanent solution was retracted, the site became eligible for a public involvement plan. And so on May 23rd, community members filed a petition to establish a public involvement plan for the site, which is an outstanding opportunity for the public to participate in, in, in the process as we move forward to site closure again. So for this public involvement plan, it's, Buckley and Mann has 20 days to respond to that petition. That date's coming up soon. And that will be the official inception of the public involvement plan. And within that May 23rd date, there's, Buckley and Mann has 80 days to prepare a public involvement plan, and that will involve a public meeting and a public comment period of 20 days where we'll accept comments from the public. We'll respond to those comments. And then we'll hold the public meeting to discuss those comments. And this, once the public involvement plan, we call it a PIP, is established, that will allow the community members to review any MCP submittals that are going to go to DEP before they're submitted, provide feedback, and then engage with us at public meetings before those reports can be submitted to Mass DEP. So it's really, it's built right into the regulations. It's a really great mechanism for the public to be involved in the process and to help, help the LSP understand public's concerns and focus the corrective strategies in a way that's productive, that works for both, both the, the community and the developer. So with that, I think I'm, I'm done. I hope that was informative, and I'll pass it on to Frank, who's LSP for Town.
Before you pass it on, Steve, I'm going to allow the board, before Frank speaks, just ask you any questions.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ken, if you want to start.
Yeah, I had a few questions, Steve.
Yep.
First of all, thank you for the thorough presentation. It's very helpful to see the historic photographs and to have the historic explanation of where the sources of contamination were. I think that this is the first time we're getting that, that information. It's long overdue. I have a question about the slide, well, not really the slide, but you mentioned that there were, there was dredging, historic dredging of those lagoons, the dye house lagoons, and those, there'd be piles of dredging spoils.
Correct.
Basically next to these lagoons. Are, are those spoils all gone at this point, or are they still there?
Those spoils are, are now underneath the cover in the consolidation area within the AOL area.
Okay. So why wasn't, like in 2001, if you know the answer, why didn't they excavate and remove all of those contaminated soils? Why did they leave contaminated soils in place?
Well, you have to remember that the, that Buckley and Mann facility stopped operating the Carbonizer in the 1940s, and dye house operations stopped in the mid 1980s. So by 2000, around the late 1990s, when the remediation was done, both of those areas had grown in and become functional wetlands. They came back, I mean, you can imagine 60 years of growth in the Carbonizer Lagoon and 15 years of growth in the dye house lagoon. They'd established as, as wetland areas. And, and so this is, I wasn't the LSP, but they did, they did provide some information on why they made their decisions. And so they looked at the contaminant levels, and they saw organic contaminants that are susceptible to natural degradation in the environment, that were likely to reduce in concentration over time, two-methylnaphthalene or petroleum hydrocarbons. And they looked at metals which were very close to the, to the residential, most stringent standards, and unlikely to, to move, to leach into groundwater. And so they weighed that removal of, of, of those soils against the loss of a wetland resource. And ultimately, they, they decided that, that the preservation of that wetland resources was, was, was worth allowing the natural processes to take care of the contamination.
So on your slide, on page five, you, this, this is the sampling that was done between 1986 and 1992 with the Carbonizer Lagoon and the trench. And it looks like there are three locations.
Yes.
Of sampling. And just to understand the chart, you've got total petroleum hydrocarbons. Does that include the, the methyl, I can't pronounce these names.
No, no. Two-methylnaphthalene is, is not included in that analysis, no.
Okay. Is that a hydrocarbon?
It's a hydrocarbon. The, the total, or, yeah, it's a, it's a PAH, we call it. But yeah, it's a hydrocarbon.
Okay. But that's not included in...
It's not included in the total petroleum hydrocarbons, no.
Okay. So I guess I'm just wondering, like, why were there certain things sampled for in the Carbonizer Lagoon that, and those are different than the, than the things that were sampled in other areas?
It's a diff, it's a difficult question to answer, but, but I, but the two-methylnaphthalene was a primary constituent, constituent of the dye carrier and were more likely to be found in the dye house side of the operation than they were in the Carbonizer. I can only imagine that was the rationale that was used at the time.
All right. And so the sampling in the Carbonizer Lagoon seemed, seems pretty alarming that, I mean, that there's a maximum reading of the petroleum hydrocarbons that exceeds the state limit. And, but there's only three samples. So one of the, one out of three is exceeding that state limit. And the same thing with lead and chromium.
I can speak to the lead and the chromium, that the, these, these standards change over time as, as new toxicity studies are, are completed and new information is learned. And the, the lead, the lead standard at that point in time when they made this decision was higher than, it was 300. And the chromium standard that they used was, was 1,000. It's become more stringent now that we assume that, we assume, without any knowledge, we assume that chromium six, the more toxic, is, is the one that's present. So those are the decisions that were made. And I, and I believe, I would suspect that their assumption about the petroleum hydrocarbons was that those are very, very amenable to natural degradation and that they would, that they would naturally degrade over time.
Okay. What about lead? Does that degrade at all, or?
No, I, yeah, the lead I...
It just stays there, right?
What was the concentration of lead in those three samples, the average?
Well, those one hit at 920.
And the average would have been below?
Five ninety. I'm sorry, that's zinc. There was one hit at 670, and the average was 241.
Right. And I, and so that their rationale was that the lead number at the time for the most stringent lead number was 300. So 241 would have been below the 300.
Okay. And, and do you have more up-to-date sampling of that area? Is that what those...
We do, yeah. And so the, the slide at the end with the, with all the red dots on it.
So you're still showing that elevated level of lead?
Absolutely. The elevated levels of lead are, are there.
So you're going to propose, you, you through your client are going to propose a, a solution to either remove the soils or do something with, with respect to that issue?
That's correct. The, the levels of lead in the Carbonizer Lagoon... The levels of lead in the Carbonizer Lagoon need to be looked at more closely, and that's in the process of being done from an environmental standpoint as well as a human health standpoint.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, that these charts with all these contaminants that are in your slides, are these, these parameters are a select group of things that you're putting in here? It's not the complete list of-
That's correct.
And were there any other parameters that exceeded state levels that you're not including in your charts?
I put everything that exceeded on there, but there were, there were others that were detected. Of course, there are natural, metals that are natural in the environment that are detected, and there are some other PAHs that are detected, but at lower levels.
Okay, so any parameter that was exceeded, you put in these charts?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And the complete data set is on the, was provided in the, in our summary, data summary report. Those have comprehensive tables with everything that was analyzed for, even the things that weren't detected.
All right.
Not on this presentation, but it was, it was provided on, at an FTP site.
Okay. Now, on the tail race sampling, what was the, what was this, the iron, the iron issue in the tail race? Can you elaborate? What, is that a human health concern? Is that an environmental concern?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a human health concern. Iron's not toxic to humans, but it could potentially be an environmental concern. And that's also in the process of being studied, and there's really two questions that need to be answered. Is, the first question is, is that iron there as a result of the Buckley and Mann operations? Or is it a natural condition? And if it's a natural condition, then we would not evaluate cleanup options for that. That's, it's, we're only, we're charged with cleaning up, you know, environmental conditions that are a result of the release from the facility. And if it's a natural condition, we would, we would not address that.
So, now moving to groundwater-
Sure.
-monitoring. These are 2014, 2015 readings, same question. If there were, were there other parameters sampled, and if so, if there were exceedances, you would have included them in the charts?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. There were many that were non-detected. I pulled out the two-methylnaphthalene, even though it was not detected, because that's, it's a notable contaminant on the site, something that was known to be used.
And there's no other petroleum hydrocarbons in the groundwater that exceeded state levels?
There were not, no.
Now, the audit, you know, we talked about this, the first three are sort of administrative issues. The fourth one is a little bit more concerning, and I guess my question would be, in 2001, when this REO was filed, was it a requirement for, by DEP, for the LSP to provide the screening? And if so, do you have any theory for why this wasn't done at the time?
It was a requirement. I can't offer a reason why it wasn't, it wasn't done.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Okay. The answer to the question. All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, this time, I'd like to introduce Frank Ricardi, who is from Weston and Sampson. He is the town's consultant and the ZVA's consultant with us. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, members of the public. My name's Frank Ricardi, I'm an LSP and a professional engineer in Massachusetts with Weston and Sampson. Weston and Sampson's been around for 120 years, mostly municipal consultant, working for cities and towns just like Norfolk. We conduct peer reviews on similar sites for many different cities and towns as well. I'm very happy to be here tonight. I know this is very concerning to the community. I want you to know that I'm taking a fresh look at all of the work that the development team has done, as well as the work that has been done in the past. And I'm a resource for you. If you have any questions, you can work through the board. I'm happy to talk to anyone at any time about what's going on here. So, next slide, please. I'd like to start off by saying, in my initial review of the site information, there are a lot of questions. I don't see a major concern for human health based on the data that the development team has collected to date. The stuff that was done in the past, not so good. But the development team, in our meetings, and what we've talked about, and how we've looked at the data, I really think they're a great team. I think that they have come to the table, they're going to comply, they have no choice to comply with the regulations. Steve is an LSP, he's very knowledgeable, I've known Steve for a long time. But we have to comply with the regulations for the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, and there is alphabet soup. So, if there's an acronym or anything that you don't understand, please interrupt and ask questions, and I give that leeway to the board if you would allow that. Otherwise, we can wait till the end, and we'll answer questions as well. So, my presentation is pretty brief, so, next slide, please. Next slide. So what was our scope of work? So, the town of Norfolk hired us to look at the historical status, the current status of remediation and risk assessment activities, want to make sure that if remediation in the past was done with all applicable state laws, look at the risks posed by the site, which is of concern to the community, obviously, to the bidders and future residents, to evaluate if the current, proposed current site conditions could impact your municipal well, and evaluate information presented by the development team. Next slide, please. So, we reviewed the file that was available on the Mass DEP website, we got up to speed, we read those things. I have a team that's working with me that consists of a professional hydrogeologist who's looking at some of the hydrogeology issues, and also a human health risk assessor who is looking at the human health risk aspects of the project. There has been no ecological risk conducted to date, we're all aware of that. So, when that happens, we'll bring our ecological risk assessor into, into the picture. And we also reviewed the document prepared by Steve and Mabit and the development team. So, what are the findings? If I picked up that site and I had to look at it for the development team and come to closure so that it was safe to develop and to, for the town to use, I would look at the requirements that are in the regulations in the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. Now, for an REO, for the closure document to be filed, there are certain things that have to be done, that have to be included in that report. I did not find certain things in that report which gave me pause and question. We talked about it together, and I think we're in general agreement. Steve mentioned a conceptual site model. That really is the first thing that you need to do when you're assessing a site. What are the contaminants? What are the chemicals being used at the processing, as part of the processing of the facility? Where were they stored? Where were they used in the process? What is the waste produced by them? How do you get from point A, raw product, to point Z, waste? You look at all of those things for all of those chemicals, and then you develop a sampling plan, okay? The goal of the sampling is to evaluate the nature, what types of chemicals, and the extent of the contamination. Where has the contaminants come to lie on the site? And that doesn't just include exceedances. You have to define where the contaminants are holistically on the site, both vertically and horizontally. I did not find that the nature and extent was well-defined yet. Fate and transport, we talked about that as well. There's a lot going on at the site. You have a dammed pond that's at higher elevation, you go down to the site, there's lagoons, there's water flowing rapidly in the river, discharge of the groundwater is to the river, it looks like, and then that goes off and downstream. Good and bad, okay? We'll get into that a little bit more. But we need to clearly state what the contaminants are, how they act in the environment. Like metals, they tend to strongly absorb to the soil particles. There's a couple metals, like iron, that are really soluble in water, but lead and some of the other heavy metals, they like to be in soil. You don't find dissolved lead unless you have really high levels of lead in groundwater, okay? The PAHs, the petrolyms, those are the things that we know are site-related contaminants, and they're being assessed. But those things are also not very soluble. The EPH, the extractable petroleum hydrocarbons, those are heavier-end hydrocarbons, and they're typically heavier-end oils that are used for heating, and heating oil and such. Now, there was also, groundwater is clearly something that everyone is concerned about. I don't think, and we'll get into this more later, I think the monitoring well network could be improved. Ecological risk, we talked about ecological risk. When you walk the site, there is significant iron staining, okay? Under the regulations, it's called, you have to, when you see iron flock at a disposal site, which is Buckley and Mann is a disposal site in accordance with the regulations, you have to evaluate what's called readily apparent harm. Now, that iron could be there as a result of natural processes, or it could be indicative of a contaminant mass in the ground that the electrons and the microbes are using to eat, and they convert the present iron in the groundwater, they use it as an electron donor, and they start eating the contaminant, and the result is this oxidized iron. So you have to evaluate that, and that's part of the ecological risk assessment process, which will be done as part of the next work. Human health risk, obviously, you want to make sure you're not doing it prematurely. And I think as part of the 2001 closure, they only looked at some Method 1 standards. These are the most conservative standards that DEP evaluates and comes up with for cleanup of sites. So it's basically just comparison. I have this number, I compare it to this number, am I above or below, yes or no? And then you can average the site concentrations and see if you're below those standards and close out the site, okay? But you have to have the nature and extent evaluated first. You can't just say, oh, I took three samples and I averaged them, and now we're done. So, nature and extent has to be defined. Next slide, please. So, is remediation and compliance? So, as of now, the site is reopened by Steve. So officially, yes, but there are still deficiencies that need to be resolved, okay? We talked about data gaps. I have some additional data gaps that we'll work in to talk about with the development team. Specifically, I think the monitoring well network could be improved. The AUL area, activity and use limitation is a deed restriction on a property. So what the Buckley and Mann site did was they took the waste that they believed were the worst of the worst, they dug them out. Typically, when you do something like that, you take confirmatory samplings at the end to show that you got the worst of the worst out. I don't think I saw any confirmatory sampling. And they consolidated it in this, in this area where the AUL is placed. Excuse me. So, the purpose of the AUL is to eliminate exposure. They covered it with three feet of soil, there's no direct exposure. They, typically when you have an AUL, you're required to do monitoring to make sure that the cap integrity is still intact. I didn't find any monitoring reports, I may have missed them, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but usually semi-annually or annually, someone is required to walk that cap extent to make sure that animals aren't burrowing into it, ATVs aren't driving over it, pushing soil out of the way. So we definitely need to get tighter control of that area. We may need additional remediation to address ecological risk, okay? That's definitely, we need to get some data there to evaluate what's happening in that Carbonizer, and the Carbonizer Lagoon and Carbonizer Trench area. And we want to definitely do some more monitoring of that capped area to make sure that it's still capping what is intended to be capped. The other thing, you know, one monitoring well, it is in a down gradient position from that, but if the worst of the worst materials is consolidated under that, I think a series of monitoring wells, you have a very sensitive receptor in the Mill River, you definitely want to make sure that as part of the eco-risk evaluation, we're not discharging any contaminants into that sensitive receptor, okay? So we talked about this, I would recommend a current round of groundwater sampling from the site monitoring network. I also want to evaluate the condition of the wells, because these wells are very old. I want to make sure that they're in contact with the aquifer appropriately so we can grab very good data, make sure that it's in compliance. I also wanted to say there was one concentration of a solvent, trichloroethylene. Trichloroethylene is an industrial degreaser, I'm pretty sure they were degreasing some tools or something on the site. There was one hit of three micrograms per liter, the state cleanup level is five, our drinking water standard is five. I didn't feel comfortable with that, so I've asked the development team to evaluate VOCs in groundwater. And of all those things, vapor from the groundwater migrating into homes, that's a big concern, so I want to make sure that there's no issues related to that. Okay, next slide. Human health risks, we can only evaluate what was done in the past, and this, these are slides, I'm not a professional human health risk assessor, but I do have one on staff. So, really, no formal risk characterization was completed in the closure document. Kind of informal, looked at some hazards in these areas, but really didn't discuss any of the other areas listed there. Typically, what's done as a first step for a risk characterization is to ask, how could people or the environment be exposed to the contaminant? Is it ingestion, respiration, direct contact, inject, you know, injection? So you do this exposure assessment to make sure you're being thorough and comprehensive in what type of exposures could be happening at the site. Then you, then you develop what's a dose response. So, how much of that contaminant am I going to be exposed to, and what would be the response in the human body to those contaminants? So, we did not see any of that. Okay, let's look at the next slide. Yeah, I think so, yeah. So, again, the detected constituents are really only compared to cleanup standards in these areas. I want you to rest assured, what I typically do is put all the sampling locations on a big map, write what was, what was found, what was the concentration, and what was the depth. And then we start drawing circles of where the nature and extent is not defined, either going off the site or going vertically. And we'll address that, and we'll say, you know, I think more samples need to be collected here. Well, have you considered this? No. And we'll talk about what needs to be done to do what should have been done correctly, okay? Eco-risk assessment, we've already talked about this, and I'll get into that a little bit more later. Characterization of safety, you know, is it safe to walk around that site? Typically, that's like open trenches, giant floor drains, you know, things that could really present a public health hazard. Characterization of public welfare, that's really like buried drums, some of these other kind of obvious hazards that, you know, in walking around the site, I didn't observe any, but still, that needs to be done and evaluated and then documented in some of the closure documents. Are you going the wrong way? Yeah. Oh, nope, sorry, that was right. There we go. So some of the issues that we, that we talked about, I think the number of samples for this big site was kind of low. The individual areas sometime were only represented with one or two samples for soil or groundwater. The tables were just generally nonexistent in the REO, and comparison to cleanup standards was lacking. Soil from areas, those seven areas were placed under the cap, but there was no discussion of the constituents' concentrations, and no post-mediation samples were collected. Sediment data in the lagoons were compared to soil standards, but there's sediment screening levels, which we'll do as part of the, which the development team will do as part of the first stage of the ecological risk, and no formal ecological risk characterization was completed. The analytical data from groundwater are mostly below Method 1 standards, but typically when you close out a site, it depends on what constituents were detected. Like if, if we had volatile organics, the VOCs detected above groundwater standards, you would need a full year, four rounds, to show that those VOCs are below the standards, okay? Metals and petroleum, depending on which ones, it's a minimum of two consecutive seasonal rounds that you need to have to achieve site closure, okay? On the ecological risk, which wasn't performed, it's a three-step process. The first stage is to look at the concentrations that are in the sediment in the water and compare them to risk-based standards for the sediment. They're called NOELs and LOWLs, which are no effect levels and low effect levels. If there's exceedances, then you proceed on to the second stage of the ecological risk characterization, which looks at, do I have a pathway? Like I said, a lot of the contaminants on the site are strongly absorbed to the sediment and to the soil matrix, and they're not, they're not available to be uptaken by the organisms. So there's tests that you can do in the sediment, where you spin the sediment real fast, you take the supernatant of that spinning water, and then you analyze that to see if, are the contaminants in there, and can the bugs and critters in the sediment take them up and be killed? Then it's like a food chain model. So, after that stage, if, if the sediment sampling shows that there's no bioavailability, there's no contaminants to be uptaken by the organisms, then you can say that there's no ecological risk. If there is concentrations that could be bioavailable to the organism- If there is concentrations that could be bioavailable to the organisms, then you do toxicity testing, okay? So you actually take a bunch of sediment, you inject critters that are indicator species, and they know how long it takes for them to die, and they do mortality counts of those critters to see if the sediment is toxic or not. These are really microscopic things. No fish or bugs or bunnies are killed or anything. So at that stage, if the mortality rates are too high based on the sediment, then you perform remediation. You try to clean that up, or you could cap the sediment to make sure that you establish a new ecological habitat for bugs and bunnies. Because sometimes it's not really appropriate to just rip up everything. There's, we've grown beyond that. There's new ways to kind of take care of these contaminants. So things to be done and to be evaluated. I want to say too that now that the site is a PIP site, Public Involvement Plan site, everything that the developer team is going to be doing will be submitted in the public forum. So you'll get a two-week notice of a meeting that's going to happen for a submittal. You come to the meeting, there'll be a presentation of the submittal to explain to you what is in there. You have 21 days or 20 days to provide comments and questions. The development team will then answer those questions, and then there will be a final submittal, okay? If there is comments or questions that you feel are inadequately represented, you can still comment in the next phase of the document, or you can always talk to the town or DEP if there's. But I really don't think, knowing the team that's here, that there shouldn't be good discourse in these public meetings to really address the questions that the community has regarding the cleanup of the site, okay? Again, not a professional hydrogeologist, but our hydrogeologist reviewed this, and I'll just go through some of his findings. Please note that the central region of Mass DEP approved the groundwater discharge permit, but our hydrogeologist thought that the subsurface data collection was insufficient to truly understand the groundwater flow horizontally and vertically, to understand the aquifer geometry, and that's basically like the depth of water bearing unit, the rib, bedrock, all of those kind of measurements that you would take. And then the site-wide understanding of the aquifer properties, hydraulic conductivities, the gradients. Next slide, please. But in general, like I said, the DEP approved it. They thought that the data was sufficient to provide the permit. The numerical groundwater flow model in general, I spoke to him today, he was, he thought Horsley-Witten did a nice job reviewing the GeoHydrocycle model. He did note that the model was not calibrated or verified, and that's a typical thing that you do for a groundwater model. You kind of have to test it and make sure that it sticks up to your assumptions and your models. He found the model capable of simulating the mound height at the discharge location in down gradient towards the river, but it wasn't capable of simulating any impacts to private water supply wells, the town test well site to the north, the AUL area, or any other sensitive receptor. Next slide, please. In terms of the private wells and the test well site, it's not known whether there is a hydraulic connection to those sensitive receptors. To basically make sure that there are not impacts, he was recommending that the discharge be held to a higher quality standard. Specifically, he was talking about nutrients to make sure that there's no impacts to nutrients. He recommended some pre- and post-construction monitoring of overburdened and bedrock wells to kind of, as sentinel wells, to make sure that everything is performing as was modeled. But you may need some additional monitoring wells, and we haven't looked at the current monitoring well network that Rick presented tonight, so we'll get all that data and evaluate that as well. So the Franklin Mill River wells are over a mile from the proposed discharge. GHC calculated a travel time of a drop of water from the site to the well as 3.6 years. He thinks there's very low risk of impact from the development there, but he does recommend, again, a higher quality standard for the discharge, specifically nutrients, and then the pre- and post-construction monitoring. With regard to soil removing and site grading, he wants people to know, and I've seen some correspondence about, oh, all that water stores all of this groundwater. What's being removed is dry. It's overburdened. It doesn't store groundwater. The saturated aquifer is what stores groundwater. Now, at any given time, there's capillary forces that hold a pretty insignificant amount of water. If you took a ton of that soil in the overburden and picked it up, you might get a drop of water, okay? Now, we're not talking about filtration of rainwater and what goes down. That definitely, you don't have that material. But as far as storage, if it's overburdened material, it doesn't store water, okay? So he wanted to make that characterization. And there's a requirement that you still maintain 10 feet above the seasonal high groundwater elevation, so you have sufficient filtration capacity. That's in the regulation. I think it's the town regulation that stipulates that 10 feet, okay? In the AUL area, the discharge just from the mounding increases the hydraulic gradient. The gradient is just the slope of the water table, so there's, I believe it was a five-foot groundwater fluctuation, but a .4 foot mounding. So just that little change in the groundwater table will change the hydraulic gradient, which also changes the flow velocity, which increases the flow of water through that area. But to evaluate if it's going to migrate contaminants, we need additional wells, we need additional groundwater sampling to evaluate that. But again, our feeling is that even though the groundwater velocity is increased, that it will not migrate metals and TPHs bound to those soils. That is it. That's all we have for tonight, but I hope that was helpful in our first look. We'll continue to evaluate the reports that are coming out, and hopefully we can be a resource to you in your questions.
Thank you, Frank.
Mr. President, the PIP meetings.
Yes.
Where are those held? Are they under the jurisdiction of the board?
Yeah, the regulations say that the meeting has to be in the communities affected by the release of the disposal site, so buck, bay, man.
Were you involved in that?
What's that? Oh, of course. Yeah, yeah. Is the town official petitioner? Did someone from the town sign that? I'm not sure.
No.
So it's typically held in a public space in the town. This would be a great place to have them. And you just have a presentation like this, and it's an open forum for public questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Frank, the hydrologist, will he or she be attending?
Use the microphone.
Okay, how's that? Frank, I'd like to know, the hydrologist that you mentioned, will he or she be attending future meetings?
If requested, he absolutely would, and I confirmed that with him today.
Okay. And the reason I ask is I think there's obviously concern from some of the members of the board and also the butters with the amount of material that's going to be removed from the site. And, you know, from a layman's perspective, it doesn't make sense to me that removing material doesn't affect the ability of the groundwater to be filtered as it settles into the ground. That's a major question that I think a lot of people have, and I'd like to have that drilled down on.
Yeah, I don't think I did a great job explaining what he explained to me.
Yeah, I mean, I know you tried your best, but that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, yeah. I think conceptually, it's hard for folks to understand.
So I'd like to have you bring that question back to the hydrologist.
Sure.
So that that can be addressed.
Specifically, you're just wondering about the filtration capacity or the storage capacity?
Yeah, I mean, you know, they want to remove a lot of material.
Yep.
And it doesn't make, doesn't seem to make sense to me personally that removing this material won't affect the ability of the environment to filter the water going down to the water table.
Okay, I understand that.
Does that make sense?
Yep, yep. So what would be left? So from the disposal site review perspective, you know, the areas that the soil is being removed, you know, I think we need to look at the nature and extent, but my understanding is those are high and dry up around the disposal site area. So the contaminants getting up there to then be pulled in with the water and then deposited doesn't seem like a faint transport mechanism that would be significant. But we will absolutely get him here to answer those questions, and I apologize that if I didn't answer that correctly.
So in seeing the presentation tonight, the number one thing that struck me the most is something that's not on the agenda for going forward, but really looking back. And I don't want to dwell on the past because we do want to move forward, but it just, I'm scratching my head because the way you've outlined this, it looks like the cleanup that was done in 2001 really missed a lot of marks, that there wasn't adequate risk assessment for human health, for ecological, there weren't adequate samplings done and so forth. And then we have, you know, the landfill not excavated, it was just left in place. A lot of questions are in my head, and I'm thinking to myself, there's this audit by DEP this year, last year, the only thing DEP flagged was one thing, the ecological assessment. And that makes me concerned as just a citizen of Massachusetts, that we've got hundreds of thousands of waste sites around the state, very few of these actually get audited, and the ones that get audited, I'm questioning whether or not these audits are worth anything. And it just, it makes me very nervous to think that this board, other boards around the state are looking at projects like this with histories.
Yeah.
And if we don't hire somebody like Weston and Sampson to actually peel back the layers, we're missing stuff. And so I'm very thankful that you've done this work, and I hope everybody here in the room is as well. And thanks to the Board of Selectmen for agreeing to do the work and for opening up this issue. So anyway, I just want to make that comment, and we can talk about it later. But just to move forward, I guess, what do you see as the next step? I mean, how much more time do you need to produce a report or produce a list of questions and action items? You know, we discussed this a little bit yesterday when we met informally, but can you explain to the public and the board what your next steps are?
Sure. So my next steps are to, like I said, I'm going to prepare a, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm going to prepare a map that basically looks at all the sampling that has been done to date, what was detected where. Do we have any data gaps? Do we have very high concentrations at the lowest level that was tested that says, well, what's deeper? Do we have anything that is above cleanup standards on the perimeter of the site that would indicate it goes further, so that we can draw an accurate site boundary to where the contaminants have come to lay? That's essential, I think. You know, to do anything moving forward, if I was the LSP, I would want to make sure that first and foremost, I would have nature and extent of contamination well defined. Because if you can't answer that, and, you know, this team will now be standing in front of you to present their plan, how they're going to involve the public, and then the next step will be a Phase Two scope of work, and Steve and I haven't discussed this, but for the ecological risk assessment, there's going to be some additional sampling tested, so that has to go as a scope of work and to the record. But you'll have a chance to comment on that, and that's something that you have to know the nature and extent of contamination to make sure that the samples that are being collected are sufficient to define that extent, okay? But then, because it's a public involvement plant site, it, because of the nature of the timelines, it gives you time to evaluate it, for you to have your questions answered and submitted. So particularly for sites like this, the public involvement plan process is exactly what DEP envisioned for answering public questions and concerns about cleanup of hazardous waste sites. So I think that's a good thing, to then engage public like yourself. So that would be my first thing, is to just say what has been done on the site. I'll also look at, you know, are there any glaring areas that I feel present current risks? You know, some of the lead concentrations were pretty high, so I'd look at those concentrations to evaluate if there's any immediate risks that I would flag that. And look at that conceptual site model and make sure that tests have been collected and samples have been collected in the right spots based on the history of the site. And as far as generating a report, probably within three weeks, three or four weeks, we'd get a draft pulled together, okay?
Frank, from a procedural standpoint, how do you, do you get involved in the PIP at all? Will you be providing comments, or will you be providing information to the board from what goes on during the PIP process, or how does that relate to you? Being that you're obviously not the applicant or the LSP on record.
Yeah, I think, you know, if the town would like me to stay involved throughout the process, I can be a sounding board for the future submittals. I'm happy to do that. I presented our scope of work for this, which would be culminated with a letter of port based on the historical review and what was submitted by the applicant or the development team. But if there's future work in terms of the PIP and helping to review, I'm happy to stay on, so.
Any questions from the board?
I would think that it would be important to have Frank involved in that part of the process. That's, you know, pretty complicated.
Great. At this time, we're going to allow public comment. And again, the discussion tonight is focusing on the LSP's work, so we'd like to keep your comments, if you have any, to this, what the LSPs have discussed with us this evening. Ask you to come forward, state your name, and address your comments to the board.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a few comments before a public comment, if I could?
Sure, if you don't mind, sir.
Just quick, I'll be very brief, thanks. No, I just wanted to mention that basically, that in terms of the Buckley and Mann site, that's a site that had industrial processes, an ongoing operation for many years. And I just want to make sure that folks understand that Abbeyville Development, Abbeyville Residential is coming into this, Tom's coming into this, has been evaluating, he looked at the existing data. He's also had other professionals take a look at the existing data, and actually has been very proactive in sort of identifying potential data gaps that are out there that were perceived. So I want to make sure that folks understand that Tom's interests are also aligned with the town's interests as well as the neighborhood's interest because he doesn't want to buy into an issue. And I think that basically with the data that's going to be put together, that this is going to be well managed, and it's going to be resolved, and we're going to satisfy the regulatory requirements. So I just wanted to point out those items as well. And in terms of any other issues with respect to the hydrology, I think, I'm not sure whether you've been a party to all the data that's been compiled. I would encourage that discussion to be undertaken with Horsley-Witten and also with Steve Smith at GeoHydrocycle, because I think you need to have the full data to evaluate that as well. So I just wanted to mention that comment as well. Thank you.
Based on what we heard today, how does the ongoing reports and evaluation and potential mitigation, how does that fit in with the 40B law as it relates to the timeliness that we have in evaluating this project?
It's a great question, and it's a gray area of the law. To what extent does the zoning board have jurisdiction over these kind of issues, these environmental contamination issues? The zoning board's jurisdiction under 40B is generally limited to bylaws and regulations that exist in the town of Norfolk. And if the town of Norfolk doesn't have a set of regulations that govern, you know, waste contamination, then the board is limited in terms of what it can do to impose conditions or require studies and so forth as part of this process. So, you know, I'm currently looking at what our existing regulatory regime is in Norfolk and making sure that the zoning board stays in the right track and doesn't veer off into areas that it's not supposed to veer off into. Certainly, it can inquire about these issues that we have been doing over the last couple months. We can take in this information as, we can take in any information as the board. But there are some limitations because this is a state law issue for the most part, and for the most part, it's not something that typically is within any town board's jurisdiction except for maybe the Board of Health. So again, there is some limited jurisdiction. I'll have a better answer for you at the next hearing, but there's limits on what we can do.
I could add to that. I think it's less than a gray area.
I think it's less than a gray area, Dan. But on the other hand, too, I don't disagree with much of what you've said. But also, keep in mind that there is now a completely separate process that's going to result in extensive and thorough review of environmental conditions through the public involvement process. So, again, that's a state process. Board may have some ability to undertake some conditions, but certainly, we have to satisfy the conditions of the state in order to go forward as well with respect to the environmental piece. I don't think that the project itself, based on the information that we've put together, impacts the AOL area or the environmental area and vice versa. So, that will be pointed out a little bit further in the future. But again, this is an area that's separate and apart from where the proposed development is being undertaken. So, and all the information that's been put together leads us to the conclusion that that can be dealt with separately from the entire project.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Robert Kenner-Reggie, I'm the Public Works Director for the Town of Franklin, Mass. Also resident of Millis. In layman's terms, I'm glad this is going forward. I think the town of Norfolk has done a good job hiring their own LSP to go ahead and look at this. I've worked with both these engineering firms before and they're both very capable and the right questions should be asked and answered. On layman's terms, I'm glad to hear, you know, some of the contaminants found out there are somewhat, they can be mitigated, they can be contained, and they can be monitored. And that would be, through my experience, one of the biggest things. On a sidebar, I'm also the Planning Board Chairman at Millis, but we deal with a lot of contaminated sites also. I would strongly recommend you have a strong monitoring site, monitoring program going forward with this because things do change over time. So, obviously, I'm here concerned about our wells Four and Five that are adjacent to here. But as I said, and additionally, the package treatment plant that's proposed, I'll need further information on that. Worked with those in the past, they are, they tend to be better if they're well maintained and taken care of in a subject system. They can be good for groundwater recharge, which I know folks in Norfolk need and also can be used well. But to make a lot of comments, we'll let the board know, the residents know, the town of Franklin's fault also. And until we get the further reports on it, we'll be doing, we'll be looking at it quite a bit also. So, thank you.
Pass along our pleasure of that to Mr. Nutting, maybe he would like to contribute as well down to our.
Money-wise? Yeah, good luck.
We haven't heard from him, though we'd like to.
Yeah, no, I talked to him today, so I told him I was coming over just to take a look. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Other concerns? It's, I'll be, it's, go ahead. Before you speak, is Dave still here, Diamond? Dave, are you satisfied at this point?
I want to just put some drone pictures up, take a good, keep those, big picture as.
Do you, I know we briefly talked, do you still think we need them with regard to what the presentation is showing, where the different items are? Do you think it's something you should give?
Sixteen more pictures, two tables.
Yeah, I'll let you do the two pictures, I'll let you do the two charts if you'd like. Okay? And then just, and then provide the information, then if you would provide the information to Frank, that would be great.
Provided.
Okay?
This is a great, another question.
While you're getting ready, sir, do you want to ask your question while we're waiting?
Larry Wilson, 22 Lawrence Street. Can you hear this? I noticed, and it was great to see the historical picture of the 1940s. I do know that that site has a long history, as mentioned. And I do know we're making some assumptions as to where we're taking samples. The dye building was at such and such a place on such and such a date. The carbonizer was over there on such and such a date. And we're basing the sampling off those locations. The real issue is, where was the dye building before that? And was the carbonizer someplace else before that? Because what you really have is a situation over a number of years that, like, most manufacturing plants are in flux. So, I'm just wondering if there's more history? Is there more sampling that should be done in terms of some major nest egg out there of treasure that people just don't know exists because they didn't know the dye building was in another site at one time?
Thank you. Dave, are you?
Yeah. It's not working? Maybe we jinxed it.
I did have a question relating to the use of averages. Where's Steve? How you doing, Steve? I'm Dave Diamond, Three Breaths Farm Road. I stood right about here, I think, three or four months ago, expressing concern about human health hazard. And it's a field day work and I'm going to ask a couple of questions tonight about some of the LSP reports. They'll be brief and we're going to try to get a picture up on a table to ask some questions which will relate to people. It's very important for us as citizens to look back, some of us have lived here forty years or more. That mill's been in operation since the mid 1800s. It's been a tannery, it's been, it's been a paper mill. I'm not sure of the exact history, but we do have some history on it. And the wastewater from before 1975 that went in, coming out of there was 40,000 gallons per week. It's, you know, if you do some of the math there, think with the operations, it could be as much as 200 million gallons of water flowing into that area. So, Amy, you working on that table? Okay. So, I'll ask Steve about the use of averages. You had a picture up there and up in the corner, you had listed the averages and did not exceed. And I was curious if you had a gradient of maybe a 10 by 10 gradient of test sites that were evenly matched? Could you speak about what the average would mean if you're looking at a gradient of tests and exceeds? What does that really mean to have a gradient and an average? Use of the average, to me, I'm not a mathematician, but it struck me as kind of odd.
Well, the way in which we model exposure to contaminated soils is to assume that a receptor, a human, is exposed equally to and randomly at any point within that exposure unit. So, we have a group of samples that make up, their intent is to characterize the concentrations of certain chemicals in an exposure unit. Let's call the Carbonizer Lagoon an exposure unit. And we know that generally, human behavior, the people will not necessarily go back to the same spot or, in the course of the occupying or using that land. It's a risk assessment practice to use an average to represent the average exposure over that area for humans.
So, that was, that's very helpful. Because I, what I, I was sitting here thinking about it and asking question if you have 20 people, young kids playing, and 20 pregnant women in a different area, are they exposed evenly on an average to health risk? And I just didn't know how that works. So, I think some of us were thinking that. I did have another quick question as to, is okay if I speak to him directly?
I dress it to the board now.
Okay, to the board. Is, there was a chart up there that had the carbonizer pit and all the dots that were tested. Were all those test results reported on Table 13? Are you familiar with Table 13 in the report? I can give it to you if you don't have it. Just one right here.
They're not all on there. They're subsequent to the delivery of this report in April, we collected additional samples in May. So, this is, doesn't represent all of the data that was shown on there.
All the dots, right. So, it could go up as high as 12 or about as far as the samples?
Yeah, I think it's 18. We did, we did, we did additional here. Yeah, we went deeper. Just to Frank's point, we looked at the samples that had exceedances on an individual basis, not an average basis, an individual basis. And we decided we wanted to look more closely vertically, deeper, and then step out laterally to define the nature and extent of contamination in the Carbonizer Lagoon. And those samples were collected in May 2018 after that summary report was submitted and those will be shared with the public immediately.
Thank you for that exchange. We're going to, we'll skip the pictures, except I'll, I just said we do have a couple of hours of drone footage in different conditions, weather conditions. Actually, the entire site down to the railroad tracks in city mills. And I think it's helpful, you can go to bigdig.com and see them. But it's helpful when you hear about a carbonizer pit or tail race or something, it was so helpful to see those historic pictures. But when you look at it from a different perspective from drones, it just seems to be very helpful. So, this, just for an orientation, is obviously it's looking at Bush Pond. And what I did want to reference, we have a summary table that we put together, an infographic, that overlays some of the testing that's done to just build some awareness about it. And I think now that there will be a PIP process, we'll try to come up with a common set of tools for us to work efficiently, not waste the town's money or the applicant's money gathering data. There's a Google Earth model that's been developed. It's got 124 data point locations. You can right-click on them and find all the monitoring data, it can be averaged. Drone footage will be out on that, too. So, it's a Google Earth Pro model, we'll make that available going forward. All of the maps, about 42 of them have been transparentized and have been put in as overlay. So, that's a reference tool that will be used by the PIP group. Amy, if you could just go forward, keep going. Okay, you just asked my question. I had one question, Mr. Chairman, about, in here it says from zero to one foot depth. And that was an immediate flag, you know, a group of people talked about that. And is zero to one feet, is zero a non-test and is one foot, you know, 12 inches or is it six inches above or below? Because the grade does change in there about six feet. So, maybe we could inquire more about that. Zero, were these tests done at zero feet or 12 inches as far as the soil sample depth?
Frank, do you want to dress up? Or Steve, either one?
Why the depth? It would be more, no, no, go ahead, Steve. Yeah, it's your data.
Those samples are what we call composite samples. So, it incorporates soil from zero, from grade to one foot below grade at the individual sample point. So, if you want to reference them elevation-wise, they're going to be at different elevations. But zero to one is relative to the grade at that particular sampling point. Zero to one feet was selected as the interval. We're doing an environmental study and typically, zero to one, the top foot of soil is the interval of concern for exposure to environmental receptors. So, they look, the eco-risk assessors are going to look at the top foot of soil as being, as being sort of the home, the place, the depth of penetration for environmental receptors. And then just to add on to the previous point, is there are samples from one to two and two to three from some of these locations as well because, in particular, where we wanted to determine the vertical extent, let's, for instance, CLSS five and CLSS six, we went one or two intervals deeper to try to find the bottom of that where we got into clean soil.
So, I just wanted to get some clarification on that. So, you would be taking at least maybe three inches of soil out for a sample, it wouldn't be zero. You would take at least three inches of soil or you'd take as much as six? What, is there an average amount? Just for, you know, if we're going to do some more sampling, for consistency on how much soil was taken out?
So, zero to one foot is, let me explain the sample methodology. There's a core of soil taken from the ground. The core extends to 12 inches deep. And that entire aliquot of soil, so it's about a couple inch diameter core advanced to a foot, is pulled out in its entirety, put into a mixing bowl, stirred around. So, we're trying to homogenize it to make sure that the, whatever part of that sample is taken out is representative of the entire zero to one foot interval in that location. And then, and that's the stirred around sample, it's sub-sampled and put into a sampling jar, cleaned sampling jar, and sent to the lab for analysis.
I just had another further question about the locations in the Carbonizer Lagoon and how they were picked in the carbon, the trench and how they were picked as the locations to test. Some were kind of scattered, some were clustered, and it didn't appear that there are any in the island of the Carbonizer Lagoon. And I'll just also.
I think they mentioned they're going to do further testing there. So, I think, let's wait and see.
Okay. Just a recommendation that the CDM document reviewed, there was a lot of work that was done, and this is, I'm citing from the golf course, PIP, that the Carbonizer Lagoon was dredged and created a dike in between the Mill River and the lagoon. And that's of great interest, or was then, particularly in one area. If you can just go, this is the last slide, I won't take up too much, maybe five minutes max on this. Go to the last slide down after that. There should be one more. Okay, if you do full screen? There you go. I think we're going to have to go to full screen to see that one. So, this was a way of putting together a lot of information from, and this is all from the report that Steve presented. And these are the sample locations. Now, I know there was a nice picture with the red dots, but it was important for us to just ask, have this to ask, question, you can stop there, Amy. In the upper left-hand corner, there's soil seed exceeds and we got an average and a maximum for those chemicals. And also soil sample detected. And I think as a PIP group comes together, this is a great place for us to focus. We're not schooled in what the MCP standards are, but there's some things up there that look alarming. And I think the one that a lot of people are concerned about from talking with them is the chromium VI. So, I don't know if Frank or Steve, if you can tell us about chromium VI tonight and just give us a summary of it. It's in some places and I think the big concern is whether or not it's in the dike itself because that is direct within four or five feet of the Mill River where that soil sample was taken.
No, I think, unless I'm mistaken, Steve, I think that's going to be part of the PIP process.
That's okay.
I think it's below, everywhere I read in the reports tonight, it appears to be below the state, state standards. And I think, I think that will become part of your PIP process.
That's fine, we're just looking, bringing that to attention, there will be a health hazard assessment done in parallel by some of the citizens and that will be a focus of it, chromium VI.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Chris Wagner, Park Street. I think in regard to, you said that the study's going to determine the vertical and horizontal breadth of any contaminants. You know, the, we're told that the development in this area are going to be very separate, but we don't know at this point how far things extend. And if we're going to be removing a million cubic yards of material to depths far exceeding probably what we're going to be testing or digging down 60 feet, would all that material be tested before removed off-site? And would that be required to meet Leg Land disposal restrictions?
I think, Frank, you're having your people look into the removal of that dirt. And I don't know, Tommy, do you want to comment at all on restrictions with regard to that material being removed and how it's viewed?
Actually, any place where there's earth removal that is being completed, basically, there was no processes done on those places or anything else. It was more upgradient, quite significantly more upgradient than where all the actual industrial uses were done at the time. There's 60, 70, 80, or older trees that have vegetated the site up in those areas. So, nothing's being removed from any of those areas that were previously disturbed with that. That's a great point, if it wants to be brought up in the PIP process, that could be something that could be looked at as well.
Okay. Frank, any other?
You raised a good point about the nature and extent. And that's something that, you know, we would, we would co-locate, you know, the contaminant boundary with the development boundary to make sure that, you know, those types of issues don't arise. I think what Tom has said is pretty valid. That stuff, from my quick review, is much, at a much higher elevation and you're digging down. But absolutely, you want to make sure that there's no removal of soils. With regard to the testing, if it's native soil and it's not part of the disposal site boundary, it's just clean soil being moved from one side. not part of the disposal site boundary, it's just clean soil being moved from one site to the other. If it's impacted at all with contaminants and it's part of the disposal site, there's provisions in the Massachusetts Contingency Plan that state you can't bring soil with concentrations of X to locations that have concentrations significantly lower than X. But that's for only soils that are on the disposal site proper. If you've defined the extent, and it's outside, and there's, you know, we have no reason to think it's part of the disposal site, it's just moving dirt from one site to the other.
And just a quick follow-up with, it might not, it's not really related to the removal, but to the other side of the Mill River, which was proposed to be open space to the town. Like, we could see in some of the images, there's like additional trenches that extend to that area. So what would be the testing for, for that, you know, if it is, again, it's passive use, so I'm sure it would be a lower standard. But if that's going to, the testing's going to extend to that area?
I, I think at this point, we have, we have adequate historical knowledge of what happened there, that there, there were no mill operations on the other side of the, of the Mill River. So, and if there are, you know, we can discuss this further throughout the public involvement process for sure. But, but right now, given the historical information that we have about where the mill operated, we, we would consider the Mill River to be a contamination divide, and we wouldn't expect contamination to be on the other side of that river.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. There's no further questions?
So my question is sort of related to what Mike asked. So there's a lot of soil...
Mike, please.
Khaliza.
Okay.
So there was, there's a lot of soil that's being removed. And the soil is between our neighborhood and the contaminated area. And my layman's mind says, keep the soil there because it's a filter for us between the contamination and our neighborhood.
Thank you. One more, Sandy?
Sandy, my, eight Eric Road. So I'm wondering, does the ZBA, do you have sufficient information at this point to ensure that human health and the environment is protected? Because it sounded like they want to go forward with that part of it, even though we need to determine the extent of the contamination. So would, would it be in the best interest of the town and, well, for all of us, to have the ZBA condition the project to complete all of the assessment prior to allowing the development to go forward?
We haven't made any determinations yet. We haven't seen Frank's report until we've received Frank's report. We won't be making any determinations, and we'll evaluate at that time.
So do you have any projects that are similar to this, where there's a contaminated site, and they're trying to put a 40B on it? I mean, I've looked, I, I haven't seen any. Have you seen any, Dan?
None before the board at this time.
I mean, I mean, not your board. I mean, anywhere.
Yeah, there's actually precedent for this. There was, there's a project in Holliston, which I think Attorney Smolak was alluding to, where the zoning board did attempt to put conditions on a, it was a redevelopment of a brownfield. And the zoning board in Holliston was concerned about the, the remediation of the site and wanting to ensure that that happened properly. They put conditions on the permit. Those conditions were stricken, stricken by the Housing Appeals Committee and then subsequently by the court, the reviewing court. So when I talk about the limitations on the board's authority, that's what I'm referring to. There is unfortunately, and I say unfortunately because I don't agree with it, but there are limitations on the board's authority with respect to the state law issue. So if there's room for us to regulate on these kind of issues, we will, I can assure you. And, and we will find those ways, if there's a legal way to do it. But it's, it's a gray area, and it's not, so we need to figure that out. But in, in the meantime, it's certainly within the board's authority and jurisdiction to evaluate the overall public health and safety impacts related to a project. So we, we know that part is, we're on safe ground. And so that's the process we're doing. We're getting this report by Weston and Sampson. We're going to follow up with our hydrologist, Neil Price. We're going to follow up with Frank's colleague, the hydrologist. And so we're going to just continue to collect the information that we need to make these educated decisions. But we're not, we're not anywhere near there yet. I think we're, we're at least a month away from having that completed.
So if the disposal site is actually larger than they think it is, and it goes into parts of the plan for the development, so then what happens? Do you ask for a redesign because that becomes part of the AUL? Or I'm just curious what happens?
I think we have to wait till we get the reports. We, we don't have that information yet. Okay?
I mean, in general, if the disposal site, real quickly, in general, if the extent of contamination goes into the development area, you have to evaluate the risks. And if there's risk posed, you either have to mitigate that risk by remediation, doing something to get rid of it appropriately, or making sure you eliminate the exposure to those contaminants. So it could be an activity and use limitation or something like that. But that will all get evaluated, and I'm sure as a residential development, you know, that would have to be considered very carefully.
So I'm curious about the chromium six that was near the Mill River and that gentleman left from Franklin. But has anybody notified Franklin of what's going into the Mill River? Or whose responsibility is that?
I think Franklin has access to all the same files that we all do. And I think we've, I think Franklin is aware of what's going on. So we, we're looking forward to Franklin becoming part of this process now.
And then on Table 10, there was some arsenic in Bush Pond. So I'm wondering, has the town tested for the arsenic levels in the town well yet?
Steve, do you want to, do you want to comment on that at all? You're saying in the town well? In the Franklin town well?
Well, the Franklin town well and plus our wells, which are downstream.
Well, you're, when you say your wells, whose wells? I don't know if Franklin's tested yet because they haven't provided us. When you say your wells, are you saying residents' wells?
No, I mean the town well of Norfolk.
What town well are you referring to?
Gold Street.
Okay.
I don't know if they test for arsenic at all in the last...
I don't think we have anybody here tonight who can speak to that unless Steve can.
I can't, no. I think the town tests for all sorts of things on a regular basis, and those reports are public records.
I, I do have it been, I didn't see arsenic on it. So I'm wondering, in light of the Table 10, has anybody looked at it recently?
Actually, you should probably check with Bob McGee. He probably can give you that information, the latest, the latest test results. I think they just did a test this spring at some point of the town wells.
All right. And thank you. Thank you both for doing a good job.
Thank you. Can I, I, I do have some comments or answers to a couple of questions. And the first is with respect to nature and extent. I just want to be clear that the, that the potentially, we're using our judgment based on the historical use of the site. The potential increases in the nature and extent of contamination are really on a micro scale. So there's no expectation on, on our part at all, anyone's part, that the contamination extends up the hill. Doesn't tend to move, it won't move against gravity. It'll move downhill. Water doesn't flow uphill. And it doesn't, as I spoke to earlier, unlikely to extend past the river to the north. And so we're talking about really micro scale. So maybe we, with the extent of the lagoons, maybe we missed it by 20 feet, 50 feet, and not something that would impact as far as where the residential development is proposed. And then secondly, I just want to make sure that I, I put on the record that there is no chromium six in groundwater. There's no chromium in groundwater above drinking water standards. We have not tested the groundwater for chromium six, but there's no chromium above drinking water standards. And that drinking water standard is set at the most conservative level to account for the possibility that all that chromium is the more toxic chromium six form. So there is no chromium six discharging to the river, and, and there is, and there's, so there's no, there's no risk that there's, the river or wells are contaminated with chromium.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, our next meeting, do you have any other comments, Stan? John, any other comments? Our next meeting is going to be July 18. I will obviously continue this process as well as a number of the other issues. We're still looking at the wastewater treatment plant. We'll be doing our peer reviews with regard to the bedrock analysis that Rick provided, and closing out some of the other areas. So it'll be, our next meeting, July 18, here at the KP Freeman Kennedy School at 7:00 PM. But I have a motion to continue the public hearing to that time.
I move to continue the public hearing for the Preserve at Abbeville, and Abbeville Commons to July 18, to be held at the Freeman Kennedy School at 7 o'clock PM.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Make a motion to close the, close the ZBA meeting for...
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.